Six o'clock. Call us if you have an order. Please stand for what's your lead. Would you like to lead us? Put your hand up in your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the free will which stands one is ungranted, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if you'd like to remain standing, we have Mary Kay Sherry. Would you like to give your location for us?
Articled in heaven, we come to thee at this time, and we're grateful to thee for the opportunity that we have to meet together this day. We're grateful for this weak community that we live in, and we're grateful for those who guide and direct this city and all the administrative roles that they have. We're grateful for each rest that is here tonight. Please be with them as they speak, that they might be careful with the things that they say, that they might share their concerns. We're grateful to thee again for the many blessings that we enjoy, and pray that thy Spirit will be with us this night, when we say this humbly in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Cindy, roll call.
Councilmember Wright?
Here.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Bildering?
Here.
Mayor Protemo Gilby?
Here.
Mayor Metz?
Here.
All present?
Thank you. Okay, we have multiple announcements as there are changes to the agenda. Okay, announcements, please note, these proceedings will not be livestreamed today. You'll be able to view the meeting beginning Thursday, August 26, 2021. This is the 29 Palms website, it's www.29palms.org, by clicking on Meeting Agenda Sleep. We apologize for that change in the venue, we were unable to get that started. And the other thing I just want to remind you of, this is the school district's policy, is any indoor building has to have masks on, so we're not supposed to say that. Okay, so awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations, introduction of Charles Abbott and Associates employees.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to introduce Paul Osterman, he's our new building official, and they can introduce our new employees, contract with Charles Abbott.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor, City Council. As Mr. McKino said, my name is Paul Osterman, and I'm the Charles Abbott Associate, and we do provide W600 engineering services to the city of 29 Palms. As you all know, in the past year or so, the city has undergone some growth, at which time we feel it's necessary to increase our stacking levels, and which brings us to tonight's presentation. First person I'd like to introduce is Jessica Hannah. She's our new, fairly new, prevent technician. She comes with a very strong customer service background, which we feel is very important for meeting with the public, helping the public with their needs. And the second person I'd like to introduce is Sam Hart. He is a newer ICC certified building inspector, getting to know a lot of the city's people and local developers, and is doing rather well. And I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And welcome to the city. Okay, we have another little announcement to make, that obviously this is such an important occasion tonight, that we have two people that are going to celebrate their birthdays here, God's going to celebrate their age, and Councilmember Wright, so we want to all sing their birthday. Okay, mine, it's for Cindy. Well, we go ahead and sing while they're getting this.
Happy Birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear Cindy, happy birthday to you.
I'm smiling under here, thank you.
So, screen goes up, if you like, sixty-five now?
Seventy-seven. All right, so now we have councilmember comments and reports of meetings attended. Start over with you, Steve, Mr. Bert the boy.
Hi, since last meeting, there's been nothing for me, Mr. Bert, it's like, some of the local stuff that's been going on, no major meetings for me, so that's good, but I mean, when I do have ones, it's very long, so that's all I have this morning.
Thank you. Joel?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, we already sang Happy Birthday to these gentlemen, but I would like to wish everybody in the Marongo Basin, especially here in 29 Palms, celebrating their birthday in August, happy birthday, especially you for my son Matthew, who's a big third, so happy birthday, Matthew. Let's see, I did have a mountain desert measure high meeting, and we approved $1.1 million to the city town of Apple Valley to make Stoddard, what is the name of that?
Stoddard Wells.
Stoddard Wells, they're going to expand it to, I believe, four lanes, because there's been two lanes, and it's, we're going through that already, and now it's on the park. So we all approved that, and we'll go to the SBCA board, should be approved there September first, and I think that's it.
Thank you. Isn't that where Bert Texas, Mur Station is on? Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'm fifty-five today, so for my birthday, I'm going to take a restaurant tour and eat off the senior menu. I've had you at JPA this month, and they're pretty much still doing a lot of reviewing and stuff like that, because a large portion of the board is new members, so they're doing a lot of reviewing and things like that. And then the next meeting was changed, instead of November 11th, it's going to be November 4th. Do want to welcome Jessica and Sam, and, I don't know why they put this cake in the front of me, because I'm probably going to eat it while I'm up here, but anyway, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Matt?
Yes. Hi, I did not do any city functions this time around, but what I did do was participate in, with the healthcare district, in doing dental bags for the back to school events at all schools. And I would like to remind everyone that our children are back in school now, so please be mindful of the speeding and the speed zones for our local schools. That's it.
Thank you. I attended a base lunch, and I participated in giving awards to two young Marines, so that was pretty good. That was the first time they've actually invited us to come out through that, it was sponsored by the YMCA out of town base. And then had invited to a dinner with some folks, with Senator Grove, and got to go to Patton Harretts, so I've been there a long time, so there was a lot of people there. And then I went to the Food for Life board meeting, and they're trying to restructure, so that's a good thing. Okay, I'm not sure, if I want to do this now, I guess I'll just do it now, there's been some talk by some of the staff members, that, oh, you know, we're hearing things about the Project Phoenix, and why I accused myself, some of you are new to 29 Palms and not had heard the story. Obviously, that whole project started in 2010, we had to sue, 2011, but we had to sue the state to get the money, took a long time. So when it started, got started, got started, and then I got married in 2017, and my wife happened to have a beauty salon there for twenty years, obviously, I married her, she has a shop there, I could not go down anything else on Project Phoenix, so I held no property in that area, actually, I've never owned any property in that whole entire area, so I just want to make sure that everyone in the audience knew that, because there hasn't been, like I say, we got some new people, haven't heard me tell that story in a long time, and like I told them back in 2017, I liked my wife, so it had Project Phoenix had to go. So, also, I just want to clarify a few things, has been said about these vacation rentals, as far as I'm concerned, I do own two pieces of, one house and one duplex, they are both long-term. One, my family, my dad bought in 1969, the house, we still have it, my sister and I own it, the duplex, my dad and I built in 1985, and my sister and I continue owning it, it's always been long-term rent, so I have zero vacation home rentals, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear when this meeting gets started.
Okay, so we're going to go to consent calendar. Oh, I forgot my glasses. On that example, let's have the consent calendar to be considered routine by the City Council, will be enacted by one motion in the form listed, any item may be removed from the consent calendar, considered separately by the City Council. The public will be given an opportunity to commit on the consent counter items prior to the City Council action. Does anybody want to pull any items from the consent calendar at this time? Anybody not, anybody from the audience would like to make a comment or pull one of the items off the consent calendar? Seeing that, we get back to council, looking for a motion.
Motion.
Okay, second, I have motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing that, we'll call both, both please.
Councilmember Bildering?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Protemo Gilby?
Aye.
Mayor Metz?
Aye.
Approved by them?
Thank you. No items are to remove, discussion of potential actions, number nine, Community Development Block Program, Home Key Program. Mr. McKino.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the recommendation in front of you this evening is the City Council approved a resolution authorizing the application for funding and execution of a grant agreement for the CDBG, Community Development Block Program Coronavirus Response Home Key Program. Just by way of background, the Home Key Program is a program spawned from CDBG to help relieve the homeless crisis within the state of California. We, the city, has been partnering, working with Marongo Basin Arch to add some low-income apartments to the housing within 29 Palms, so the city has put in an application for this grant, partnering with Home Key. We also do have a purchase and sale agreement on a property on Helm, Helm State, that the owner is willing to leave in escrow for six months, ending in December, pending the successful grant application. So again, the item in front of you this evening is approving a resolution which allows us to submit that application, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, the council has a question? Hold on to all the comments, anybody would like to, do you have any slips to me for this agenda? Is there any slips for this agenda? Well, did anybody fill out a slip for this item? I'm seeing now, okay, we'll bring it back to council.
I made a motion that reads that the CDBG, Home Key Program, recommendation?
That would be Resolution 2112.
Your Resolution 2112?
Yes. Second, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll call, please.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Bildering?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Mayor Protemo Gilby?
Aye.
Mayor Metz?
Aye.
Approved by them?
Okay, now we're going to come to the public hearing for urgency ordinance to establish a moratorium on the issuance of vacation home rental permits.
Mayor, I am going to recuse myself, however, I just want to let everybody know that I did talk to the city attorney, and he did say that I was legally okay to be on this council while we made the decision with VHR. However, since I have not been participating in it for the last two weeks or the last two meetings, I don't figure that we would remove me to be voicing my opinion at this time, because I was obligated into any of the conversation prior to this, so I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, can we get a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the recommendation from staff this evening is that the council conduct a public hearing to consider the introduction waiver of rural reading and adoption of an urgency ordinance to establish, establish a moratorium on acceptance of new vacation home rental applications as of August 25th, which is tomorrow, and reinstate the planning commission appeal fee of $305, or a moratorium on the issuance of vacation home rental permits as of August 25th, which again is tomorrow. Just to give some background, and first and foremost, just to apologize to the audience tonight and the council, this was a last minute change, moving over to the school district to allow for some space, obviously, we needed some space for people to be here, what was sacrificed in that was the livestream, so, and again, we apologize about that, but we wanted to make sure we had the space for the folks here this evening. So the staff report will be brief, the council wants me to be brief, because I'm sure there will be a lot of public testimony and council deliberation, and I trust the public and the council is well versed on the topic. But first, I wanted to give some salient points for the council to consider, and just some clarification, there are two ordinances in the packet this evening, depending on what the council policy is. One will be no more permits, period, which means those that are pending won't be able to process through, and the other one will be no more applications, meaning as of tomorrow, we will not accept any applications, however, we'll continue to issue permits as those pending as of today. So those are the two policy questions in front of you this evening, and if we are going to still issue permits, one of the other recommendations is to reinstate the fee for appeals. The appeals fee, as per our adopted fee schedule, was $305. We went through, and I know we've been talking about it, we wanted to kind of fine tune this, you know, looking at the costs associated with an appeal, we came up with $817 as of today, that was not including, though, the night of the planning commission hearing, so I know as quoted in the past, about $1,000, it's pretty relative to that, which is why we're asking for that $305 to be reinstated. Just by way of history, the inception of the VHR policy was back in 2015, and although we have not found anything written, it was definitely validated from Planning Commissioner Mendoza, along with our former Assistant Planner Brenda Simmons, that part of the discussion and recommendation at that time, because there was a, because the VHR policy was new, was to waive and not charge the appeals fee. I think, you know, through the last two years, and the intent, as we understand it, was because it was a new policy, we wanted to get feedback on that, and I think, I think staff, planning commission, and council are well, have heard loud and clear the issues associated with it, so I think the intent of that waiver has been heard, but at this time now, staff is asking it to be reinstated. Just by, you know, comparison, a couple of our neighboring cities and their appeals fee, Yucca Valley, $720, Bannon, $4,031, Palm Springs, $308, Desert Hot Spring, $1,305, Beaumont, $642, Rancho Mirage, $2,648, Needle, $678, Bloody, $460, and Barstow, $621. So I think, you know, as, although we're not recovering our total cost, I think it's, you know, within reason to reinstate that fee of $305. The urgency ordinance needs, it needs a supermajority of the council, so council, as its body is five members, so a supermajority would be four fifths, with Councilmember Clark recusing himself, it has to be, to pass, it has to be four zero this evening. The initial period for an urgency ordinance is forty-five days, and we have to bring that back, so the forty-five days goes in the early part of October, so the first council meeting, the prior council meeting before the forty-five days is September 28th, so in a little over a month, we need to bring this back for consideration of extension or other. Outside of the formal recommendation that's in front of you this evening, also is some policy direction relating to the advisory committee. As recommended in the staff report, is a, an ad hoc committee, a committee of seven, two planning commissioners that have already been assigned, Commissioner Crusia and Commissioner Walker, which are here this evening, along with two council members that will be picked hopefully this evening, then three members of the public. So one of the questions that needs to be answered outside of the formal recommendation is what council members want to sit on that ad hoc committee, and how do we select the members of the public? The recommendation is to have it open for one week, for the members of the public to email the city clerk, Ms. Bieskes, then next Tuesday, one week from today, the two members selected from the council will select the three members from the public for the committee. So that's two questions that have to be answered outside of the formal recommendation this evening. Just by way of background, this will be the sixth meeting that we've had over the last couple of years on vacation home rentals, going back, you know, June, June of 2020, September of 2020, November of 2020, March of 2021, June of 2021, and today. Just to summarize, and these are not all the issues, I just wanted to put three pro and three con as it relates to VHRs that are out there, and again, these, this is not all inclusive, there are many others that are out there, but these are probably the most common. You know, for the, the con on the VHRs is to be able to maintain the sanctity of a residential neighborhood, disturbing the neighbors with parties and the like, and keeping the residential character, you know, of the neighborhood. One of the pros there, it's, it does, VHRs do continue the destination growth of 29 Palms, VHRs are a preferred lodging option for some. You know, again, on the con, considering the housing stock of our community, to meet the needs of those looking for a home to rent or to buy, people are concerned about the lack of options, you know, for those. From the pro, is the revenue growth, the first year of VHRs, first full year of VHRs, 2015 was a partial year, so 2016, we brought in $26,000 of TOT revenue, and this year, for the current twelve months, on a TBIT year, we're expected to bring over $600,000 of TOT revenue. On the con of VHRs, VHRs are unfairly competing with commercial lodging, without making that same large investment, so you've got a commercial activity that you'll hear in a residential area. Then finally, again, just some of them, we're sure there's many more, but just wanted to frame this, is on the pro, it does upgrade properties that otherwise would not generate that same investment in our neighborhoods. So those are some of the background and salient points to the discussion tonight. Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you for public comment.
Thank you. Anybody have some questions for staff before we get started?
On the, on the file for the fees?
Correct.
Right, on the fees, people can still come up to the forum and speak their mind for three minutes, it's free.
That is correct, okay.
Okay, anybody else? So I'll save my comments and questions after the public. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is it Dave Exposito?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, I forgot one thing that I wanted to show as you're getting ready for that, I know it was, it was asked by some council members on this topic, so I just wanted to show it here this evening, you know, our housing stock in 29 Palms, you know, so looking at the chart that's up there, I know it's behind the council, you know, hopefully the public can see it, this is a chart, you know, looking at our housing stock compared to San Bernardino County in the state of California, and the first is owner occupied, and as you can see from this chart, 28% of our housing stock is owner occupied, which is far below both the county and the state of California. Conversely speaking, is, we are a rental community, 59% of our stock is rental versus, again, a lot lower in San Bernardino County, and our vacant stock is a little higher than both the county and the state. One other thing, and again, I apologize, Mr. Mayor, forgot to do this through my presentation, you know, one of the other questions was about, you know, our, you know, the skyrocketing, the VHRs contributing to the skyrocketing values, so this is a chart from 2012 to current, that compares the United States, the county of San Bernardino in California, and some, you know, obviously, in the United States, in the county and in California, have VHRs, some do, some don't, depends on various magnitudes, and as you can see, the curve here of values, the phenomenon that we're currently seeing with rising home values is pretty consistent to what is, you know, throughout the country, the county, the state, and our average home prices is less than the others, so I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Hey, do you want to remind everyone that there's a three man timer, and because there's going to be so many folks speaking tonight, when the timer goes off, please end your presentation, because if I let every single person keep going, then it's really going to be unfair to some folks who won't get their whole three minutes, so let's just please be respectful to everyone, and we use just for three minutes, so when you hear the timer go off, please end your presentation, okay? Thank you. Okay, Anna O'Hara, here first.
Good evening, Anna O'Hara, 29 Palms. First of all, this afternoon, I double-checked with the city and was assured that all of the members of council and of the planning commission are not directly interested at this point in having a vacation rental, so there doesn't seem to be a conflict of interest. Now, because Mr. Clark resented, I'm sort of confused, but I assume that if you are interested personally in having a vacation rental, you will not, I would say at this point, involve yourself with the voting. Second of all, one of the neighbors who's very articulate and concerned passed us in our neighborhood, Lomaranda, which it really states the issue of her concern, and I am not going to go over them. I only have one concern, and I don't know the answer. As an American, I consider a vacation rental private enterprise, and I don't know what to do about the private enterprise issue. On the other hand, I would hate to see uproar in the town, you know, with people coming in, and we don't know who they are, and they're raising hell, and whatever, and they're very well known. So I have a dilemma, I don't know what the solution to the dilemma is, other than having a big study session, again, to reexamine the whole issue, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, David Rosenberg?
Hi there, I'm here today to urge the city council to honor pending VHR applications and allow them to complete the permitting process under the current ordinance. My wife and I were in escrow during the June 15th city council meeting, and we still don't have our VHR permit yet, despite moving through the process as fast as we could. If a moratorium on issuing new permits is passed today, you're going to be hurting the people you were trying to protect with the decision during the June 15th city council meeting, so I just wanted to share the timeline of our situation, so on June 8th, we entered escrow for a home that we fell in love with, and purchased to convert to a VHR as an investment for our future. to convert to a VHR as an investment for our future. In the days after that, we became aware that on June fifteenth, a potential moratorium would be discussed at the city council meeting. Our real estate agent spoke at that meeting to represent us and explain that we were in escrow and we'd be severely impacted if a moratorium was passed. And, you know, the city council listened to her feedback and decided to push the decision to, you know, today, and allow people in escrow like us to finish and submit their applications before the moratorium. So based on the outcome of the June fifteenth meeting, my wife and I decided to proceed with our home purchase. And on July ninth, we closed on our house. It was a standard thirty-day close. On the same day that we closed, we submitted our VHR application. We would have submitted it earlier, but we're not allowed to until we close on the house. So on August eleventh, four and a half weeks later, the city got to our application and reached out to us. That very same day, we responded, sent in the remaining items to make our application complete, and two business days later, on August sixteenth, we completed and passed our safety inspection, and notification letters were mailed out to neighbors that same day on the sixteenth. So, you know, in summary, we've, we entered escrow before, you know, a moratorium was brought up. We've done everything as quickly as possible, we've completed all the steps, but we don't have our permit yet because we're still in the ten-day notification period where, you know, we could potentially get appealed. So, you know, sort of my main take-home message is that I, I think the city council mayor may not be, like, assuming that it was enough time for people in escrow to get through the process, but I just wanted to alert you guys to the fact that I'm not through it yet, and we're not through it yet. So if a moratorium is, you know, passed on issuing new permits, you know, through no fault of our own, we, we won't, won't be able to get our permit, and, you know, that would be financially devastating for us, and, you know, that'd be pretty rough because there wasn't really a mention of a moratorium when we made our choice to invest in Twenty-Nine Palms. So, you know, we, we put our savings into a down payment for this home, we've invested a lot of money in preparing it to be a short-term rental, you know, remodeling furniture, security cameras, noise monitoring devices, and, you know, that money might go to waste if we don't get our permit. So I, I'm urging the city council to please honor pending applications like ours and allow us to complete the process under the current ordinance, you know, because that was the ordinance when we made the decision to invest in Twenty-Nine Palms. So, you know, again, if the ordinance has changed and new permits are paused right now, I don't know if we'll ever get our permit, so.
I think that's so.
Yeah. So, thank you.
I was waiting for the other question. Samantha?
Hello, I'm here as a VHR supporter. I believe VHRs bring many more positives for the community than negatives. I also wanted to say I don't think that things of increased noise and traffic are true in many cases. I'm currently next to several VHRs. I've never had an issue or heard anything from them, so I honestly wouldn't know the VHRs if they didn't have a sign outside. I don't think they're any different from long-term rentals. If anything, they're better maintained, and it's really easy to get problems addressed by a Call of Duty twenty-four-seven contact number. And the same is usually not true for long-term rentals. I'm against a moratorium, but if it is passed, I do believe it should only apply to new applications. I don't think we should be denying people permits if they have a pending application. That means they already submitted their application, paid the fee, and spent time and money to get the required documents and the items they need to pass the inspection. Some people invest a lot of money into preparing their homes, which is usually necessary to be a successful VHR, and they won't make that money back if they're not able to get a permit. There are some people who feel the number of pending permits is too high right now, but I just wanted to point out that's kind of a natural consequence of discussing a moratorium. No one knows how long it will go for or what new regulations will be passed. So after the June fifteenth meeting, I think everyone realized that was their last chance to get a permit. So that's why the number is a little bit high right now. But I wanted to say that issuing all those pending permits, I don't believe that's going to lead that for the community. Not everyone who gets a permit is actually going to become a short-term rental. That leads me to just saying that I believe that before decisions are made on a total cap or clustering limitations, a study needs to be done on how many people with permits are actually operating as a short-term rental. The number of issued permits is actually higher than the number of operating short-term rentals. It's a very complicated issue, and I think it will take some time to solve. Like I said, I just wanted to say that if a moratorium is passed, I do think that's a huge win for opponents of VHRs and definitely a bit of a loss for supporters of VHRs. So I think at least allowing pending permits to be processed is the right thing to do if a moratorium is decided on tonight, and just closing off new applications is a fair way to do it. I think everyone who's currently pending should be allowed to receive under the current ordinance, and that's imagining a way to implement a moratorium fairly and without causing anyone financial distress. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Jane?
Don't take this down, Dan. If you vote for a moratorium, you'll be shooting Twenty-Nine Palms in the foot. Finally, after years of being stagnant.
Okay, I think we should, I think we all know how a lot of people feel, so let's just.
Finally, after years of being stagnant, we now have some momentum rolling with Project Phoenix, new shops opening up, investors buying up all the run-down homes and fixing them up with style. We have some terrific folks coming to live in our town. All the sales of housing are not just Airbnb's. We are on the path to revitalization. Don't put the brakes on. So I am very confused. When I was at the last meeting three months ago, nowhere did I hear that there was going to be an absolute moratorium or there was going to be an appeals. I, I heard that there was going to be three months of the city coming up with a plan, which I thought perhaps was going to be limiting some Airbnb's and neighborhoods and that sort of thing. I don't hear a plan here tonight. I, I have two options, and neither one of them are good. So please, please, don't take down this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I will want to preface that, I'm here as a private citizen. Maybe I'm here to talk about and clear up some misconceptions. The Vacation Home Rental Ordinance, Chapter nineteen forty-one of the Development Code, was drafted, reviewed, and approved by the city council long before I was appointed to the planning commission. I have never claimed authorship to the ordinance. However, I have praised the city council and city administration for putting an ordinance in place to deal with the issue of VHRs long before the county of San Bernardino did. If the city didn't put a vacation home rental ordinance in place when they did, Twenty-Nine Palms would have been inundated with unpermitted VHRs. I have applied the ordinance impartially, along with the other planning commissioners, as I cannot unilaterally decide if an appeal to a VHR permit has merit. I have the privilege of serving with planning commissioners that are conscientious, prepared, and committed to the betterment of the community. Personal attacks against me or my fellow commissioners is both unwarranted and unprofessional. Vacation home rentals are a reality as an alternative to staying in a hotel or motel that is not going away. Again, I praise the city council and administration for having the foresight to draft and enact an ordinance to deal with the issue and give the citizens of Twenty-Nine Palms an avenue to voice their concerns, either pro or con. The popularity of our desert community is driving the increase in VHR applications. I will continue to work on the issue, and where improvements can be made, will make the necessary recommendations, along with my planning commission colleagues. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Okay, Gina, where's the mante?
It's good enough. I've heard worse. I've heard worse. So we need to leave these on. So there's a boarded-up house behind our home in the Hanson Track. It had a fire over a year ago, and it's been vacant since that day. It attracted several tense bike squatters to break in and take residency. Luckily, they haven't been successful, not yet. That house just sits there, empty, scarred, and blighted. There are squatters in other houses in our neighborhood, and this is a chronic problem in a number of areas. How many such homes are there in Twenty-Nine Palms right now, you wonder? So we asked code enforcement. That specific number is not available for whatever reasons. So we decided to do a drive-through in our neighborhood and count the number of vacant and boarded-up properties in the Hanson Track. A very incomplete tour of the area showed us eighteen boarded-up or vacant and derelict properties. There are probably more, but we didn't have time to drive through the street. In the same area are approximately twenty vacation rentals. One is across the street, and I didn't even know it. One thing is that most Airbnb's look nice. On the other hand, derelict homes are fire hazards and magnets for squatters, criminals, and curious children. They are genuinely dangerous. They're eyesores that are both depressing and depress the value of nearby homes. But there are no petitions against boarded-ups. Instead, we have one against vacation rentals and gentrification to preserve Twenty-Nine Palms. Okay, so to preserve Twenty-Nine Palms, maybe we should put a moratorium on people improving their properties. Maybe we need to go back to more boarded-ups with more squatters, more homeless, more criminals. And we'll definitely need more out-of-state landlords who won't take care of their regular rentals. We need more broken windows and junked-out cars in the front yards. More massage parks, less bakeries, more empty business places, fewer contractors making money renovating homes, and fewer housekeepers, handyman, and property managers. Basically, less jobs. We'll want less visitors from Europe, Asia, or even Seattle. Fewer restaurants, less landscaping. While there remain so many dangerous properties in the city, the argument that there are too many vacation rentals would be laughable were the ramifications not so serious. Throughout the entire high desert, there's a sea change going on. And outside of the native tribes who lived here on this land before, for centuries, nobody should be pulling this back to, go back to LA. We're all recent arrivals. Right now, local taxpayers are spending tens of millions renovating downtown Twenty-Nine in a tourist destination, while at the same time, we're discussing blocking progress and changes surrounding neighborhoods. It's mind-numbing to me. Put it that way, I hope someone buys the boarded-up home behind cars and puts, and turns it into an Airbnb. It'll be a welcoming improvement to my neighborhood.
Almost in Montana. Yes, not too late. Happy birthday. Thank you all. Thank you all for this marvelous civil discourse. We really need this here. Thank you. STRs are a fantastic way for Twenty-Nine Palms to enter a new era of prosperity. We need a good balance between long-term rentals and short-term rentals, however. We put a better petition that had a cap out of seven and a half percent. That seemed to be a fairly good Goldilocks spot between long-term and short-term rentals, based on other cities throughout the state of California. Pros for Airbnb's or short-term rentals. Prosperity, which we have not much of. Visitors through TOT, we have an opportunity to help, for them to help pay for our desperately needed services, and multifamily housing development, which we need for our military base. Visitors pay for desperately needed infrastructure through TOT as a pass-through tax. Because we will not be prosperous in this town and, you know, bring in a private industry to employ us unless we have sewer and water treatment. That simply will not happen. Airbnb's or short-term rentals are a great way to start doing that. Increased home values at resale means better roads, better sidewalks, more law enforcement and code enforcement, and better schools for our kids. STR owners are improving their homes, cleaning up neighborhoods, and employing our citizens with living wages, and increasing the quality of life for our neighbors and our neighborhoods and our citizens. Cons, less single-family residences are available. Available rentals do cost slightly more, but the rentals in our town are not based on short-term rentals. The rentals in our town are based on the VAH of a sergeant with two children. Okay? The rents go up because the VAH on the base is going up. Lastly, we have strangers in our neighborhoods. That's a bit scary. From a father of eight, I didn't really like the idea of adding vacation home renters in my area, short-term rentals, but after I became a super host myself and owned an Airbnb and I own long-term rentals, those people that are guests of our community are actually much better behaved than my long-term renters are. The cons can easily be addressed with an increase in TOT to twelve or thirteen percent. Currently, San Francisco and Los Angeles are fourteen percent. This increase would easily pay for a dedicated code enforcement officer and could be used to subsidize multifamily housing. Thank you all very much. Oh, let me read this last part, it's important. Please don't blow this. Let us do this. Good part. Thank you for having us tonight, and I'm going to speak on the matter. Happy birthday. So just much like the gentleman here, my wife and I were in escrow in July. We were looking at purchasing in Yucca Valley or Joshua Tree, even at Landers. We spent tons of, tons of hours and time researching the T-bid reports on everything that they were looking to do to improve the city. So we attended the July meeting, and where it says, and even in the report, the city council constituted a moratorium on June twenty-ninth. However, the hearing, public testimony, the city council gave direction to allow escrows and applications to be completed by August twenty-fourth. So after hearing that, we decided to move forward with our escrow and close on the property. Since then, we've already invested in improving the entire, the entire property, getting it ready, and we're not even short-term renting it a hundred percent of the time, maybe just a week or two, a month, as we go back down to our other property. So one of the things I want to address is, what's confusing to me is, looking at the T-bid reports and reading over tons of them, they're trying to promote the number and diversity of lodging opportunities, and the goal is to build awareness of tourists, don't just drive through Twenty-Nine Palms, but stay. They use the term "stay, shop, and dine" in Twenty-Nine Palms. But reducing the amount of lodging, lodging opportunity is going to result in those tourists and those visitors taking their lodging and picking lodging in Joshua Tree, Yucca Valley, and other neighboring communities, and spending money in those local businesses. To me, it just seems counterproductive, and especially with the entire revitalization plan with Project Phoenix. It just doesn't make any sense. So, like I said, since we've closed, we've met numerous contractors, and each one said that there have never been visits, and it's directly attributed to VHRs in remodeling these homes. So we just want to say that we are an opponent, or excuse me, proponent of VHRs, and we would ask that, based on the testimony from the July meeting, that pending applications, which I talked to Shelley, were like fourth in line right now, do not be affected, because that's, because what was said at the last meeting, we decided to move forward with our escrows now. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Deborah Douglas, resident of Joshua Tree and this community for a lot of years. I, I really appreciate all the study and research people have done coming up here, the planning department, and even, a lot of people said things I didn't agree with, but I thought it was really thoughtful. And I think we're looking at a false choice here. We, we're not looking at Airbnb's or no Airbnb's, we're looking at a moratorium so the town has the time to put in regulations that make sense for today. sense for today. For me, uh, I live in a place where it's zoned RL two and a half. It's zoned residential rural land. I can put a horse on there, I can put chickens on there, but I can't put a gas station there because that's a commercial enterprise. Hotels, motels, bed and breakfast are commercial enterprises. I'm a realtor in the past, I'm a social worker, I'm an investor. So I own property, I can ask my renter to leave and become an Airbnb, and it will be more lucrative for me. But in Joshua Tree, thirty-something, almost forty percent of the properties are now Airbnb. It's devastated our area. Twenty-Nine Palms is different, and there are some real benefits to Airbnb. In fact, most people I know use them. Uh, it has to do with the density issues, it has to do with losing affordable housing. It sounds like in this area you wouldn't be losing affordable housing, but you would improve some of your housing stock. So I support the moratorium so that you can look at other communities that have, um, limited the Airbnb, say, to, uh, a primary resident and one vacation resident, or, uh, they limit it to a hundred and twenty days, or there's a lot of solutions if you can categorize them two ways. I don't want developers from other areas coming in, making large profits in my neighborhood, and I'm losing my neighbors. I support Airbnb's of residents who have homes here and maybe have a second property that they're, um, adding for a little extra income. I, I just don't support, um, the extremes of the Airbnb's. And I'm sorry for the people who bought properties and they're caught in between, but real estate investing is a tricky business, and it's a risk, and that's why we make so much money when we buy real estate. So I, I urge you as, as a community resident to be sensible about the people that have to leave this town because there aren't rentals available or that they can afford. So what's the median income here, and what's the median rent? And I think those are issues to be considered. Thank you.
Well, you guys, let's not get carried away with this thing, okay? Be respectful for every resident community. Thank you. Okay, um, is it Cindy Bernard?
Hi, everyone. I hope you can hear me. I might, well, I'll, I'll. Um, I'm Cindy Bernard, I'm a member of Twenty-Nine Palms Neighbors. I want to be clear, we support limits, not a ban. And I also want to point out that people who think that something is being taken away from them will always have the loudest voice that doesn't mean they're the majority. Um, the last planning commission meetings that lasted almost seven hours in total demonstrated that our VHR code is broken and needs updating. Any reasonable person knows procedurally we get a temporary moratorium to pause all pending and new VHR permits while the existing code is revised. Only the city council was able to do this. Without a temporary moratorium, homeowners, tenants, and investors are applying for new permits ignorant of the revised code that's been a government. Without a temporary moratorium, pending permits will continually be processed under outdated code. Planning commission meetings stretch for hours, hearing appeals and supporters that are always denied, needing the city of time and money. This does not work. We need a temporary moratorium on new and pending permits. Part of the July twentieth planning commission meeting was supposed to give VHR study session, yet the review material wasn't available to the public. Additionally, the study session was the last item on a crowded agenda to include fourteen appeals on three properties plus their supporters. The information you received was compromised because it wasn't considered voted on for the last hour of a three-hour meeting. The August meeting was a prime example of what happens to new residences when we wind on the planning commissions or VHR penalties. When discussing the possible relocation of Alanteet's VHR permit for multiple violations, Commissioner Shushat Lindo will let four to five members to dismiss the city's public enforcement officer in your sheriff's report and diminish the resident's story of her experience despite her videos and photographs of the VHR permit in its act of doubt. And then if this would have occurred, had the city council acted in June, the dismissive behavior towards Twenty-Nine Palms residents by some members of the planning commission really has to stop. And finally, are you aware that owners located outside of Twenty-Nine Palms account for fifty-nine percent of the active permits and seventy-one percent of the city permits? City council delay acting on this moratorium for two months to give people time to close their escrows with little regard to impact on our neighborhoods. Most of those people don't live here. City council's preference for mostly absent VHR owners of the Twenty-Nine Palms neighborhoods also needs to stop. Only the city council has the authority to buy the time needed to find a workable balance between the interests of neighborhoods and VHR owners. Please enact this temporary moratorium on new and pending VHR permits today. Thank you guys for your service.
Good evening. I'm also a member of Twenty-Nine Palms Neighbors. In the current city VHR ordinance code, it states that the residential character of the neighborhood in which the use is located will be maintained and preserved, and the initials of the permit will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare of the residents in the neighborhood, or injuries to the community within the vicinity and the district in which the use is located. The oversaturation of VHRs in the city and in neighborhoods violates this exact section of the ordinance. There's been documented reporting that the city attorney has not been consulted for definition of residential character of a neighborhood since the ordinance was written over six years ago. Only one commissioner and possibly one council seems to agree that the residential characteristics of a neighborhood are indeed to be changed with the approval of the clustering of VHRs in neighborhoods and concur the definition of violation of the code that citizens are citing when submitting their appeals. The research throughout the country, many cities have concluded that VHRs do not belong in residential neighborhoods, and have since been limited or in the process of phasing them out or banning completely, thus ensuring that the residential characteristics of the respective cities and neighborhoods are maintained. Some examples, Palabasus is prohibited, Las Vegas must be owner-occupied, Palm Springs, thirty-six contracts a year, South Lake Tahoe voted out by residents, not allowing residential zones effective to end of this year, Cathedral City phasing them out by twenty-twenty-three. Yes, Twenty-Nine Palms is a gateway city to a national park. That does not mean that the neighborhoods of our city need to also be gateways to the national park. They should be a sanctuary for those citizens that live and work in the city to escape craziness of tourists and the invasion of strangers. If we continue to allow VHRs in neighborhoods, then that sanctuary is lost. A moratorium is a complete pause of the issuing of any further permits or the acceptance of additional applications need to happen so that the characteristics of the city and the neighborhoods of the city can be reserved. A limit on VHRs in the city as well as the neighborhoods needs to be established. We already have over two hundred, or close to, that is almost three percent of all single-family dwellings. That's a problem with two hundred families that have been displaced. The city and the neighborhoods cannot support anymore. Please enact this moratorium on new and pending VHR permits today. Do your part to maintain the characteristics of our city and neighborhoods.
I'm gonna try to say this. You can say that.
Hi, thank you council members for hearing us all today. We do appreciate your consideration. Um, I am a local resident, and I am also a friend and business partner, and, um, my business partner wrote a letter, and I'd like to read that letter to you today. Um, I'm writing to express my opposition to the moratorium on short-term rentals. I believe Airbnbs are bringing tourism, money, and jobs to Twenty-Nine Palms, and if the money it brings to the city can be reinvested wisely, will only make it better in the long run. I understand that this issue has many sides, that people want to preserve the town as much as possible, or that they are concerned about affordable housing for locals as well as we all are. Uh, but stopping this kind of revenue to our city is not the answer. When people buy an outdated home and model them provide job opportunities and to local skilled and unskilled workers, and will help provide people with a means to support their families, um, who then theoretically would be able to afford a home of their own. My husband and I have recently purchased a property which we plan someday to start a business here. We also have a pending VHR permit for a home in town which we plan to renovate and use as a second home while we're building our business and subsequently running it. In order to make it financially feasible, we need to occasionally rent our home when we are not in town to cover costs and make this dream possible, as many of us have. I'm, I am one as well. We are committed to using local labor and so far have been able to, but are finding that there are long ways. Drywalling, roofing, electrical, plumbing, these are all kinds of good-paying jobs that could help raise individuals and families out of poverty, and it's kind of work where people who want to come and flip houses are in need of. The town could use extra revenue these rentals will generate to invest in training for these kinds of other jobs. Property management, pool and spa maintenance, handyman cleaners, these are kinds of jobs that will continue to be needed in our town, require no formal education, and will provide many local people a path to start their own business and to support their families. Not to mention that when tourists come to visit the park, they stay in one of these Airbnbs, they will spend their money at our stores, eat at our restaurants, buy gas at our gas stations. Change is always scary, and there will always be opposition, but without change, a town cannot survive. I implore you to vote no on the moratorium, invest in trade schools in our downtown, support our cities. And however you decide to vote, um, however, should you decide to vote yes on the moratorium, I ask you at least allow pending permits to be processed. People like me are investing in second homes in Twenty-Nine Palms because, that's it?
Yeah, thank you. Jessica Darcy, Priscilla.
I'm Darcy Castle. I'm a resident. I also own a vacation rental. My position is add no moratorium at all, no limits at all. The city needs to improve. I've lived here, let's see, about first property in eighty-five, I grew up in Joshua Tree, been out here since sixty-eight. Twenty-Nine Palms has not been going in the right direction. The difference between Twenty-Nine Palms and Yucca is business, influence, revenue, and we're going backwards. Great, as many people that have Yucca Palms as you can. Let them have a place to stay, let them tell other places, people, it's a great place to stay, let them spend their money here, let them buy here, let them choose to live here, which I've seen is a couple of people that have rented from us, actually are buying property here now to be on Twenty-Nine Palms residence. As the money comes in, better businesses will come in, bigger businesses will come in. We're not a town, we're a city. We need businesses, a place to buy socks, underwear, shoes. We can't go on the Yucca for everything. Um, the more money that we bring in, the more traction we bring in. We can make our city look great, we can make our neighborhoods look great, we can clean up the abandoned properties, we can encourage people to buy property, we can bring new businesses so we can shop. It makes us better all the way around. We don't have to be the end of the tracks anymore. That's all I got to say.
I, so, thank you.
Hey, how are you guys? How you doing? I just want to say, I'm Steve Keenan. I was supposed to say I love this place. Twenty-Nine Palms is awesome. And it's not Joshua Tree, and thank God. But, um, we've got a lot of business owners in the house tonight. I've got to put a lot of money into commercial real estate and open businesses, and I hate to see the tourism picture underway. I actually own, uh, in running Airbnb, um, close to Swamp Tree, and I do live here and every weekend, but I do run around my place, I sleep on my husband's couch. It's a, it's a way for me to make money, and I also employ a friend of mine who also needs a job, it's a cleaner, and also just closed on duplex, um, which is a big deal for me in hopes to make it a, another vacation rental for the neighborhood. I moved here because it was the only place I could afford, and I've been here for three years, and I'm so blessed to be here, and I'm so blessed to be with all of you people here that help this community that I want to see grow, so thank you.
I have been here since high school. It looks like. Jeff Dunn, I've lived here a long time, um, in fact, we were not third generation. My grandfather came here in the thirties as a visitor, one of those visitors. Uh, built a little home, he lived in LA, uh, settled here. My parents settled here after World War II, and here I am. Um, by virtue of the fact that I married a realtor thirty-seven years ago, I ended up with quite a few rentals, most of which, practically all of which are long-term rentals. I've been doing that for thirty-seven years, so I'm a veteran. I retired three years ago, uh, went and inspected my rentals. I found one up by Chuck Capenger that needed a lot of work, hired people to renovate it. Contractor said, hey, this is going to be a vacation rental. I had never thought of it, but it's a beautiful piece of property, so I did it. Um, it's been a lot of fun. You should read my guestbook. People love this place. They enjoy the experience, the solitude, all the things that we love. They love it too. Haven't heard any loud parties, haven't heard any complaints. Uh, is that Patricia? I can't tell them that. Patricia's not here. Patricia's my property manager. Um, she takes care of it, so I gave her a job. She has two cleaning ladies, I gave them jobs. Uh, and it's been lucrative. Uh, I've actually made money because a lot of my long-term rentals don't make any money. I'm working on right now, I've spent three times what I collected in rent for eighteen months and then some. By the way, it's an Indian cove on the shore side, and it was ripped up. Uh, I have another one that I've been working on for three years. The city knows about it. I've been kind of procrastinating, taking my time. Honestly, I fell in love with it, and I'm not sure I want to rent it, because I like it somewhere else. But I haven't applied for permit, and it sounded like maybe I've lost my chance, so I don't know what I'm going to do with that. It's definitely not a low-income rental. I put a lot of money into it. So, uh, I don't know, it may have to go up for sale. I don't know. Um, all of the complaints that I've heard, I, I keep hearing the term, um, residential character. You know, when I was a little boy growing up here, five, six, seven, eight years old, I used to wander the neighborhood and knock on neighbors' doors and get milk and cookies, unannounced. That's what the character of the neighborhood was. But times have changed. Times do change.
Time, oh, sorry. Somebody's phone keeps going off, we're missing this one. Maybe it's home? Um, Stephen, Ski, I'm just going to use Ski on this one.
Thank you. Uh, I actually haven't been here that long. I'm a homeowner here, um, I live here, and, uh, I have a business that employs people here as well. I'm against the moratorium. I had a lot of choices, or I had places that I wanted to put, uh, my business, um, definitely other opportunities, uh, but I specifically chose Twenty-Nine Palms because I saw the investment the city was making. I saw the potential and the opportunity, um, for growth in the city. Um, and so I believe a moratorium at this point is going to restrict that a lot. Um, so I'm here for the city, and, uh, I'm against the moratorium. Thank you.
Hi, Jenny, thanks for the meeting. Hi, everyone, I'm a stranger here, uh, just moved here like a month ago. Um, I'm really against the moratorium, and a couple of reasons is that during COVID, I'm an entertainer, I'm a stand-up comic, that's my job. I lost everything, I lost all of my jobs, didn't work for a year. Having, uh, the ability to have a short-term rental is going to help with my income when I'm on the road. I have to leave California to go perform, so when I'm So when I'm wrong, it's a great way to make a lot of money. Also, I chose 29 over other places because I did see the potential here, because I saw the city growing. I want to bring comedy in myself. I want to bring entertainment. I want to build this place up and make people want to come stay here because I think that this city is beautiful, it has potential. And if you have these restrictions, you're restricting people's income like me. You're restricting visitors and strangers who bring money into this city and who like this city and come here for a reason. So what I'm saying is, don't have money. Let these applicants who go through build this city. Let people like me want to thrive here and donate to this city because I'm paying so many people to help build my house and employ contractors and electricians and landscapers and all these people. And you know, they're going to have one less person that's going to pay them if you stop whose permit's going with their. So that's all I have to say. Thanks for your watching.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm Mr. Mayor. Most of you all know me. I do a lot of business in 29 Palms. I try to support our local businesses. I was anti-Airbnb forever. And I've watched the homes in my neighborhoods become clearer, better. And I've met a lot of interesting people. I have not had an issue. But I know you're all good people. I've known you for many years. And so basically, I just want to say one thing. Be easy to people to vote for you and look what they're all saying. And please listen to that. And that's all I have to say.
Good evening. I think our city needs to grow. And if we keep kicking up a turney off, a way that brings income to the town. And that's not going to be good because you're kicking up a turney to Joshua Tree. We stopped all the Airbnb here. They already got plenty of businesses. Anytime they go there, the restaurants are packed. You've got to waste an hour or two hours to go in, have a dining food. So like you said, well, Joshua Tree is very well-known. You know, John right here, owner of the Real Graphic, T Design teacher, he still makes sure to come run the house of 29 Palms. And we need to be well-known out there. And I think we're spending money on a Phoenix project, almost $20 million, to bring more tourists. And we have buses to go, bring people into shop. In summer, our business slows down by 40 to 50%. It's not because locals left town. It's because that business was from tourist base. We still have same people living here. We've been here 17 years past here. And right now, probably we are still slow by 40, 50%. I can show numbers and prove it. Airbnb brings tourists in town. Tourists with money. They spend. They buy gas, they buy local grocery stores, they buy meat, they eat at Grill, they go to restaurants. They shop all local stores. Every year, we read our local newspaper that shows how much money was spent by tourists. Every year, oh, this many million dollars was spent in a gas station or this store, this store. That's really good for our community. Now, who builds and cleans Airbnb after they're done? All this local, you call any contractor or even a handyman, they're like, "Oh yeah, we're busy. We can't handle your problem right now." They're all busy, they're making money. Now, if we...
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jennifer Righore. I'm a resident of Indian Hill and the founder of the dreaded group Preserve 29 Palms. I'm going to focus on clustering by reading my little script here. According to the current Vacation Home Rental Code, there are no limits on the percentages of or the location of VHRs in 29 Palms. With more than 20 permitted VHRs in Indian Hill at its time, clustering of VHRs has become a serious problem. For example, there are three VHRs located within less than a two-block radius of my home. Existing locations are Hyden Pawezeville and 6784 Pine Spring Avenue, between Old Dale and Sullivan Road, and there are two pending permits. The new order of 6796 Pine Spring Avenue recently applied for a VHR permit adjacent to the VHR on location 6784 Pine Spring Avenue and a VHR location on Hyden Pawezeville. If both permits are approved, the VHRs will increase to five in less than a two-block radius. This is an example of short-term vacation rentals clustering and is unacceptable, especially in a residential neighborhood like Indian Hill, where homes are stone-strive away from each other. In 2020, Preserve 29 Palms advocated for a temporary moratorium. Temporary. We are for VHRs. But again, we are not against VHRs, we have four limitations. On all pending future permits until the current outdated VHR code is modified to include limitations and abandon clustering. If VHRs are rented as a whole house, they become a commercial enterprise, displacing zone residential neighborhoods and turning human necessity into a tradable commodity. Too many VHRs means less long-term housing. Out-of-town VHR owners take away roads from local elections and force individuals and families out of the community. While VHRs may provide money and jobs, when there are proportionately too many, they destabilize the community by taking housing off the market and turning them into unregulated, workless hotels. I encourage members of the City Council and Planning Commission to focus on the quality of life. I urge you to take past the opinions of real estate agents, VHR owners, and the dollar amount of revenue granted by VHRs. It's time to problem-solve and come up with a solution to the VHR problem that serves everybody's needs. Preserve 29 Palms supports an immediate temporary moratorium on pending and future VHR permits until the current outdated code has been modified to reflect the concerns of the community. Thank you very much and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
It's Petke, drop the Y.
Awesome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council. My name's Anita Petke. I'm a local resident. I also work for Desert Beacon, which is a short-term property management company, and 29 Palms. We did submit a letter on behalf of the moratorium we're in opposition of. We, I just want to briefly go over the letter. We are firmly committed to working with our neighbors, visitors, and community leaders in support of a reasonable, responsible, proactive methods in which we can support the continued operation of VHRs within the city. While we do not support the idea of moratorium, we respectfully would understand, should the City Council choose to go in that direction, in the event of a moratorium, please ask, we ask the city, to take into consideration the effects it would have of VHR applicants who are currently in the progress and, you know, and are imploring them to please exempt existing VHR applications from any moratorium. VHRs are vital part of our local economy and they contribute greatly to the recent growth of our community and revitalization of the downtown area. We understand the concerns of the neighborhood groups such as 29 Palms neighbors and we would like to work with such groups to come up with a common sense solution to make 29 Palms a welcoming place for those who wish to establish roots here, whether you are a full-time resident, part-time resident, or seasonal vacation home visitor. Desert Beacon firmly, we firmly support and stand behind the measures that you've taken place, utilizing enforcement options currently on the books, and hold VHR owner and operators responsible when they do not follow the rules, utilizing decimal monitoring tools such as Noiseware to prevent sustaining noise complaints before they happen, exploring limitations on how VHR permits can be issued within a defined radius, mandating that all VHRs have a local property manager or designated available to respond at any problem on the property within 30 minutes, and treating all of our neighbors and visitors despite their views on VHRs with courtesy and respect. We adamantly oppose yard signs and verbiage that can be considered hostile and unwelcome to our neighbors, visitors. Many people who have become full-time residents here in 29 Palms or visitors at one time or another, and sending a message that people are not welcome here stands against who we are as a community. Won't you be my neighbor? So thank you for your time and your leadership and be welcome.
Well, I can't read this name, but you live on Desert Lea and it looks, I don't want to say the name, I'll have to add this out. It's like 23, your Yahoo.com 23? Yahoo, that's the name. I can't read your name. What we figured out? Ellen, Leslie, Elaine, Leslie? I got that. Please don't forget, this is it. The school district wants us to wear our masks.
I need three, solve it. Hi, my name's Iain Eaton. I was born and raised from Los Angeles. I have a different perspective about the rules for short-term rentals. At the age of 23, I was a high school dropout, getting divorced, and a single mother. I never expected this. It was so disappointing. So I adopted a motto and each morning, shaking my fist to the devil, I said, "Bring it on, bitch." Because I recognized that I had to expect the unexpected. I had to make my plans using existing rules and guidelines to accomplish my goals. I enrolled in college, became an apartment manager, took my son to school karate little league. Along the way, many bad things did happen. No money to pay car insurance, the car gets stolen. Apartment building sold and if apartment manager job. But because I knew the rules and how many credits I needed, I did graduate from UCLA and then law school. In 2003, I bought a sevenplex with four apartments and three storefronts on Sunset Boulevard. In 2007, I decided to be my own tenant, build a cafe, and live upstairs. Working within the Health Department guidelines and city rules, I opened my cafe in 2008. By 2017, I felt a change in Los Angeles. It was less kind and gracious. I checked out Joshua Tree, but 29 Palms, all the stars from cheap real estate was the place for me, so I bought my first home in 29. So why am I telling you all this info? Because I decided something like my awesome cafe is needed here. It was a fun place to hear live music, make friends, eat fresh food, and relax. So from 2017 to 2019, I made plans to do just that. And the only way to do it was by setting up short-term rentals to support me. I've studied the short-term rental rules. I talked to Travis and Shelley many times about those rules. So in 2019, I rented out my cafe in LA and moved here permanently. I'm super excited to tell you I called the escrow and bistro 29 and I bought the property next door as well. One business will be called Snakes and Scars and the other is Sunset. We can have a downtown comprised of mom and pop offices along with the Ceeo. Rules and regulations are important to 29 because we're experiencing very quick growth. To put in a moratorium at this time is to create more discontent. It may be appropriate to make amendments, but that can only be determined through analysis over time and through committee. I defended the short-term rules before I decided to invest here. I hope to continue with my plans. I urge you not to impose a moratorium. Thank you.
Charles Allen? You only have one name on here. You're still going to see. You can't really read it. At the end, if you can get called up, this is you. Okay, besides Cory? Cory Morgan?
Moran.
Moran, oh.
Yes, sir. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I come here to absolutely oppose the moratorium. I think it's highly unnecessary. I think that the, between the City Council and the staff and Frank, you guys can come up with a solution to the work. I was kind of interested to see as to what has happened since the two meetings. Has there been meetings as to revitalizing the ordinance? Has there been anything that's been drafted, talked about, spoke about? Or have we just kind of let it go for the last three months when we could have worked on something?
We haven't done that, but Planning Commission's been pretty darn busy.
Right.
And it takes, as you heard before, it took eight meetings just to get to that ordinance of a half.
I understand that. So my only question or concern is if there is going to be a moratorium put in the place, it could be for 45 basis or it could be for 90 or 180 or whatever you guys decide it needs to be in order to come up with something. I think that would be highly detrimental to the city of 29 Palms. The growth that I've seen, I've been in the area for most of 36 years now. And 29's always been a place to operate. I mean, I'd never wanted to come out here. There's nothing for me out here. And now there's so much going on out here. So many people want to be out here. I've invested out here. I have two properties out here. And I'm going to continue to invest out here because I see the growth, I see the potential. And to put the brakes on it at this point, when you guys are going into, like getting ready to go into business season right now, with all the people that are going to be coming in here, I just think it's detrimental to, I think it's just detrimental to the city in a whole to completely shut down all pending and future vacation rentals right now for an unspecified period of time. Because nobody knows how long this is really going to take to go back and start working through, you know, what needs to be changed. If nothing's been done since the last meeting, it kind of doesn't bode well for everybody wondering like what's going to go on. How long does this take? How long do you guys think it will actually take to redraft the ordinance to where it works for the city, for the residents, and for the tourists that are coming in here? That's pretty much around that. I very, very much oppose it. I think you guys can work on it, get through it, and be able to get a good ordinance in place without having to have a moratorium. I understand it takes time. I understand it's very busy. And you probably need to hire more staff in order to get this done. I don't know where the budget sits, but if you stop with, I mean, put the moratorium in place, then you're losing out on extra TOT that could be potentially used towards the staff members that need to be put into place in order to get this going. Because you do need to have enforcement. You do need to have people in place that can respond on the weekends and things. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm in support of the VHRs and I am in support of not having a moratorium. I know firsthand, short-term rentals are some of the nicest, cleanest, up-to-date, well-taken care of homes in the city of 29 Palms. And yes, they are free of trash. They have to be because you don't want to rent a trashy home. It only makes sense. Who, and anyone who says otherwise is not being honest with you. I'm the super host and I take outstanding care of my rentals and my neighborhood. I make sure that everything is done properly and respectfully. The city of 29 Palms has spent millions to promote our town with project feelings and to have the visitors center here in town. So are you going to tell me that our valued, uh, excuse me, are you going to tell me our valued visitors go to, uh, sorry. Are you going to tell our valued visitors to go stay someplace else? That would not make sense.
It's hard to hear you speak with a mask on.
Okay, I'm trying. Anyway, so are you going to tell our valued visitors to go stay somewhere else? Stay the night somewhere else? I mean, in a town that, you know, we don't want to have them here, that obviously sends a wrong message. We want their business. We want the revenue. It's going to promote the town and the business is here. It is, it's an anchor and it's important. We don't want to send the wrong message to our valued visitors. We don't wanna send the wrong message to our valued visitors. Having a moratorium, or to that extent, is sending the wrong message, and that's gonna be detrimental to the economy of Twenty-Nine Palms. I appreciate the conveniences that we have. This is one of the reasons what attracted me to Twenty-Nine Palms, is the conveniences, the dining experiences, and the fast food experiences, and so on. Those are dependent on our valued visitors. So, let's, again, don't give them the wrong message. I am absolutely against the moratorium. I appreciate the growth and conveniences that come with having, uh, tourism. That's all.
Thank you very much. Very proud of you. Better hurry up and talk, you're serious. I started with a call to me.
Yeah, better do it. Fees, charges, or investments, some people have. Some people have them for income, some people have them for their, uh, second income, some people have them for future retirement income, some people have them, live in them, rent them out on weekends so that they can afford to live themselves. They go stay somewhere else. Heard the guy say, "Went to the Springs Cop," I know people that do that. In the last year, VHR rentals have generated six million dollars, which includes six hundred thousand dollars paid directly to the city of TOT, and hotels are still standing ten million in room rooms. That, that six million, million that they did didn't really knock anything off the hotels, and a lot of people, because of COVID, don't wanna stay in a hotel. Both these figures have first quarters where COVID was just losing its grip on the world. There is a demand for places to stay in Twenty-Nine Palms, and sees it to be a desirable location for some reason. Probably called me and Mac are here. With the new national park headquarters right downtown, I can see the demand increasing in the future. I've read the VHR ordinance quite a few times, actually, in the last four years. Probably more than anyone. My conclusion is that there is not one real problem within it. It has regulations and rules clear for the plan, it has penalties and fines spelled out, and a VHR can have its license suspended or revoked, and that, that means they lose their investment, they're out of business. That's simple. In the last four years, there's been four complaints to the city. Six million dollars worth of rentals, quite a few rentals, I'm pretty sure. Most experiences have obviously been good. That six million goes in many directions. Everyone said cleaners, managers, neighbors, press control. Group of probably four or five hundred people that would like to say yes to vacation home rentals. There is a group that wants to shut down, seems like it to me, because of the aggressive things that they're saying. VHR owners are slum awards. Crazy. Some of their properties stick out, look too nice in my mind. VHRs are owned by out-of-town owners, some of them are, but a lot of them come here for vacations, their children come here, their friends come here and use it, and they rent it out sometimes for extra income to, to maintain it and make you pay for it. Good move. Nothing wrong with that. It was just one guy, he even threatened the planning commissioner, getting rid of him. Just crazy. You know, when I was a kid, a teacher told me, "Just because I hit it up loud, it doesn't make me right." And if you know me, you can understand that. Everyone has a right to their opinion, and I will listen, and everyone should listen. The role of community leaders is to make decisions that are for the whole community. There's two options presented from over here. You guys, you guys, if you're the council, don't blame it on anyone else, you can do what you wanna do, I know that. You can come up with your own options.
Yeah.
Those are recommendations. You don't have to answer.
I'm sorry. Good evening, council. Uh, how's it going? City manager, mayor, uh, everybody that's here, nice to see you all, good to see you. Um, so, I was born and raised in Twenty-Nine Palms. I was blessed enough to have a touring career as a musician. During that touring career, I did nothing but sing Twenty-Nine to praises. Um, I spent the better part of twelve years telling the world that Joshua Tree and the surrounding cities, Twenty-Nine Palms predominantly, is beautiful. It's a place that should be celebrated, and it's places we should come visit. I think if we let the moratorium happen, it's a disservice to that message me and my three other teammates from here spent our twenties celebrating. And I think it sends a really necessary message to new business coming in. I think that a lot of people, especially you, um, that were born and raised here, love it and are ready to celebrate it. And I think that that involves new businesses, that involves short-term rentals. I know, for me personally, I can only speak for myself, uh, the first day of a short-term rental when I go somewhere, it feels way cooler. And, um, I don't think it has to do much more than that. I'm not saying that there shouldn't be limits, but I think completely halting business doesn't ever seem to really get a lot of solutions happening. That's all I have to say, thank you guys so much. Thank you. Margaret. Margaret. Close.
Hello, and thank you to council and everyone here tonight. My name's Charles Margarita. I've been a resident of Twenty-Nine Palms for about fourteen months. I'm an artist and a designer, and I moved here to open a short-term rental that allowed me to generate some income while pursuing my art practice. I'm lucky enough to have learned of a motion to pass a moratorium and was able to obtain my permit. I invested substantial money into my property, which has mostly gone into the hands of local contractors. I built an ADU, increasing the housing staff. I cannot underestimate the amount of stress caused by the possibility of not being able to recoup my money after having worked for over a year to make improvements on my home. I've incurred debt, as I'm sure many vacation home rental owners do while starting up, and this moratorium has posed a real threat to my financial stability. I have two artist friends who are planning to move to Twenty-Nine to set up a vacation home rental in a life here. However, they have put their plans on hold due to uncertainty of the moratorium imposed. I do not believe that there is a current and imminent threat to public health, safety, or welfare, which is a requirement of this kind of motion. I do not believe that the cost benefit of a moratorium will make a substantial difference over a forty-five day period. The findings of the planning commission states that the VHRs could possibly generate traffic noise and changes in the residential character of neighborhoods. However, I haven't seen data to support these claims. I live in an area which is the densest concentration of vacation home rentals in Hanson Trap. And the issues I see in my neighborhoods are not caused by visitors, but by local reckless drivers who speed down our streets in loud vehicles late into night. Also, majority of homes in my neighborhood have bright floodlights that remain on all night and do not meet the city's dark sky codes. I believe that there should, that this should be mu- much more strictly enforced. Vacation home rentals are buildings that are much more compliant to the city codes than most other structures. I believe that the moratorium will force many to operate without a permit because they took on debt to open a vacation home rental. I believe that these unregistered vacation home rentals could pose more of a threat to public safety than some loose notions of noise and traffic. I have no doubt that there should be stronger enforcement of vacation home rental codes, but they should not come at the expense of people who invested in this community and lived their lives here. The notion that vacation home rentals cause more harm than good is something I fundamentally disagree with, and I believe that by and large, most occupants of vacation home rentals are respectful. Before moving in.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Hi, good evening. Uh, thank you councils for, uh, hearing us. Happy birthday, guys. And Mr. Mayor just wanted to say we had a great time bowling here tonight. Um, yeah, I'm a, I'm a new resident, like you were saying, I purchased a, our home here in Twenty-Nine about a year ago, and we really fall in love with, uh, just the natural landscape and the community, and I think most of all, just the excitement. I mean, there's such an opportunity here, and the businesses coming in, uh, is, is unlike any place I've been, and I think, uh, having this moratorium could really stifle that momentum that we have. Um, so, I'm really just here to throw my support, and I think there is so much growth that's, uh, that could be happening, uh, just driving down the road. I mean, every other business is boarded up and closed down, and I think we need to get to a place where this community is thriving as much as it can, so, that's it. Thank you so much.
Ashley.
Russell.
Ramsey.
Yeah, hello. You guys are right here. Yeah, so, I am, I, it's not too good, how are you guys? Pretty good? Good. Happy birthday. Um, so, yeah, so, this is my, um, second meeting about this that I've been to, and the last one, I thought this issue was put to rest. Um, everybody was, I mean, everybody, nine out of ten people, twelve out of, you know, I, I mean, almost everybody was for vacation home rentals and the pro-tourism agenda that this town, town has, uh, set, and, and we all follow. I, I invested in two businesses in town because I came to town, I saw what you guys were doing, I loved the desert, and it just made sense. There are four new restaurants, um, that are about to go into town, and who's gonna eat there if we shut this down? If we send a memo to the entire, you know, high-desert community, Twenty-Nine's not the place to go, they're not business-friendly. And if we don't have those people staying in town, you know, they're not gonna spend money, and all the jobs that are affected by that, you know, it's the air-conditioned guy, it's, you know, we, we know all the jobs. But there are the people that have also been investing, building houses in town, and have been working for, you know, over three years, uh, building a house, and then now he's homeless there, and the rules are shift on him in the middle of the game, and that's not fair. Um, and then there's, you know, my brother has a house, he's mid-renewal renovation, same thing, investing in the town, cares about the town. Um, but the main thing is the future of the town. I think we have to have tourism business, we have to have, um, we have to have tourists, we have to have that economy. If we don't have that economy, it really should be, our town's struggling like it has before. And the moratorium sends the wrong message, so please, please, no moratorium, pro-business, and thank you guys very much.
Jonathan. Durant. Jonathan.
Good evening, my name's Jonathan Gowarding, and I wanted to say thank you to the council, the mayor, and city manager, and all here in attendance for hearing. I kinda came here impromptu today, I was actually working on my short-term rental to clean it and do some things and purchase some stuff. Um, what brought me here to the community of Twenty-Nine Palms, um, was my profession. Uh, I'm a full-time firefighter, I came here twenty years ago and actually volunteered in this community. Several years ago, I promoted and came here and was assigned here for two years. I love this community. I decided to invest in this community and purchased my first rental property in two thousand and eighteen. This community, the city, when going in there, it felt very welcome and worked with us very well. It was, it was a welcome thing going to the county, it felt like I was running into confusion, even just after I wanted to build my primary house. Um, I think all of us in here, even those who are in opposition of STRs, believe in the pursuit of an American dream, that the dream for opportunity, um, is all of ours, and some of us will take advantage of those opportunities and hopefully not in the wrong way, but we all have that opportunity, and this city for me provided that opportunity. Um, last year was my first year actually operating the STR, we did very well. I tied for my earnings to my church. I contribute to cleaners, to local businesses, and I haven't had any complaints from my neighbors, or any contacts with police, or even being a firefighter in this area, I've ever had any contacts in my own neighborhood. Sorry, I'm getting a little organized here. But in that, I, I, I put the onus on myself to have very strict rules and expectations of my guests as well, and if they violate those prior to any other outside intervention, they're out. But I've never had that because we ask them to respect them, they always done. The money that I put in here was hard-earned money, it helped appreciate the neighborhood and give people who bought homes at a cheaper position than I to actually get up, to leave if they wanted to, to make something of the investment maybe they didn't know was an investment at the time, to have a better life for themselves as well. Um, I'm in opposition to a moratorium. I live in Big Bear currently right now. We have the same problems out there, I live next to people who have short-term rentals, and we're renting right now, it doesn't make sense, but we do it. And they're faced with similar problems, but to stifle people's, um, ability to flourish, especially people who are in escrow or invested their time and money, they're committing to the city already. So, at the very minimum, I believe that the city does owe those who have already decided and committed and signed it on ink, and with their hard-earned, uh, money to invest and to promote the community to at least move forward with their permit process. And the, the last thing I'd like to share is that it's a slower timing for us right now, and it worries me that like...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Justin. Justin.
Hey, happy birthday, thank you guys, thank you. Uh, it's my first town hall, I only see it on TV and movies, so, I'm excited to see everybody. I'm a new resident, uh, my name's Dusty, and, uh, I moved here back in July, uh, closed on the thirteenth, got a house up at Indian Trail into the rights. I'm not gonna be renting that house, I love my house, I love my land, I love the community. I mean, I used to drive up here from Los Angeles, I'd see Twenty-Nine Palms, that's the, that's the, that's the street sign, tells you to come off the Twenty-Nine Palms. I see, I, I, I just, I just see how beautiful this town was, probably at one time, you know what I mean, and how, how beautiful it can be. And I also think about, like, uh, this is kind of a little bit strange, uh, but, you know, we're all, a lot of us are on the Twenty-Nine Palms, uh, what's-going-on-2029 Facebook page, you know? And I remember, I, I posted a postcard back in the fifties about, like, Twenty-Nine Palms being this beautiful town, community, you know what I mean? And it's like, I have it three hundred likes, everybody wants that, everybody wants Twenty-Nine Palms to be like a community, a personality, have some sort of, we're like modern-day Kanye's, you guys. You know what I mean? We're modern-day Kanye's, like, you make Twenty-Nine Palms a beautiful city. I was gonna say the F-word, I'm sorry. But, uh, also, I just, nobody's mentioned it before, but the service men and women here are embarrassed to come to Twenty-Nine Palms. It's not because of the heat, it's not because it's in a desert, it's because we have massage parlors, and we have, like, haircut places. There's, there's like rock and roll for them to go and, like, be young, and serve our country, and go into town and get, like, a steak, get, like, some soup, get, like, supper with people, see some coffee, you know? Go see some friends that aren't, like, uh, you know? It just, it was the National Park, we're on National Park territory, there's rural areas all around California in the deep desert, you can go there and hide away from, like, you know, everything. But, you know, we're at a great point right now, and I know you guys have good decisions to make, I know it's not easy, but as you can see, a majority in this room at least, you know, we all believe in this, in this, in this city, we really do, even the ones that don't close it, you do. And I just, real quick, uh, Airbnb's, like, if you look, did you do the research?
Please just address the council.
That's done?
No, just say, just, you, you, just address it.
Oh, yeah. If you do the research, you look into Airbnb's and stuff, they're five stars, people are vetted. You can't go to Airbnb's without being vetted and knowing, wait, there's, there's no complaints. There's nothing bad that I'm hearing, there's no bad thing, there's no, all we're doing is stopping, uh, great things from happening here, you know? Good things. For your kids, if I'm gonna have kids in my home, if I wanna, like, have children one day, like, they're not gonna be like math heads, like, they're gonna be like, they're gonna go to school, they're gonna do something with their life, they're not gonna be like wanting to kill themselves. And I know you guys have good decisions to make. I know it's not easy. But as you can see, a majority in this room at least, you know, we all believe in this, in this, in this city. We really do. Even the ones that don't close it, you do. And I just, real quick, Airbnb's, like, if you look, do you do the research?
Please just address the council.
That's done?
No, just say just, you, you-
Oh, yeah. If you do the research, you look into Airbnb's and stuff, they're five stars. People are vetting. You can't go to Airbnb's without being vetted and knowing, wait, there's, there's no complaints. There's nothing bad that I'm hearing. There's no bad thing. There's no- All we're doing is stopping great things from happening here, you know? Good things. For your kids, if I'm going to have kids in my home, if I want to like have children one day, like, they're not going to be like math heads. They're going to be like, they're going to go to school. They're going to do something with their life. They're not going to be like wanting to kill themselves. They're living in this, this shit hole, you know what I mean? I swear a lot. So I've done really good. I've done really good. But I guess that's all I want to say. Happy birthday. It's good to be part of the community here at Twenty-Nine Palms.
That's why we think that this is using, we're using the F-word in whole, as my city. A lot of Marines who love coming here and want to stay here. But thank you for your comments. Hey, if you may still come these hours and I didn't call your name, you're, you out there. We can't beat you.
Are you, are you, did you call me?
I think so.
Cindy Mark?
Where's it?
Cindy Mark?
Hold on, I was talking.
Oh.
No, it's fine.
Okay, sorry.
Cindy Mark.
Okay, thank you.
You're all.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Mark. I have lived here in the Marla Basin for over fifty years. I have seen this area grow and change over the years and do not think DHRs would negatively impact the community. The short-term rent, short-term rentals business is boost the local economy without destroying the desert landscape, which is a result of the large, such as alternative commercial storefronts. The influx of revenue from the DHRs have benefited the community and its residents. Dilapidated houses and cabins are renovated inside and out, which adds curb appeal and drives up the value of neighborhoods. This is not changing the character of the community. It is remapping it. At the last city council meeting, permits were guaranteed, or we thought they were to come. We do not need a moratorium. Pending permit should be approved. There are measures in place to mitigate concerns such as loud guests. Tourism has always been a major source of revenue, due in large part to the National Park, which most lodging, lodging being provided by corporate establishments. VHR, VHRs put some, the money back into the pockets of real people, many locals. Everyone should get to enjoy the desert, and the VHRs provide the means to do so. So I'm against the moratorium, and I think all pending permits, you know, need to be pushed through at minimal, and that's it.
Thank you. Okay, last call. Did you fill out a slip, but I didn't call your name? Maybe they left. Okay, well, is anybody else out there did not fill a slip out, which you'll have to fill in? That has not spoken yet would like to speak before we close the public hearing. Do you have something to read? Okay.
Emails and letters that were sent.
Okay. Cindy Mark was going to read the letters. Now that we read it to public comments.
So I'm not going to read emails, but I'm going to read the names of those that sent them in. Joanna Conti, Suzy Conti, Travis Fowler, Lee Harrison, Michael Tosh, Alan Tease, Debra Ofs, Lulu Brad, Katiana Santiago, Nikki McKennedy, Leslie Harris, Michael McKennedy, Beth Retske, Eric Hernandez in the Desert People, Diana Simpson, Corey Rock, Vino Knopf, Jeff Van Berg, Donna Galore, Melissa Monblock, Jane Sidely, Angie Dobreski, Sidney Bernard, Larry Baden, Teeny Hood. These are what we put to the record.
Thank you, Cindy. These are all in the package, and we, we had the opportunity to read those letters, and we'll have them also after the speeches. Thank you, Cindy. Okay, nobody else is going to come to the audio. I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council to deliberate. Does anybody have questions for staff? I have a couple. Go ahead, Matt.
I just got a question about when, because I was on that, on the council when we did the first ordinance, but I don't remember. When we did it, did we have vacation home rentals or did they all like wait until after we had the ordinance?
It's for the beginning.
No, when we did the first ordinance for vacation home rentals, I remember us doing that. But when we were doing, when we was doing it, did we actually have any vacation home rentals or did they all wait until we did the ordinance?
I believe they all waited until we had the ordinance. Now granted, that is, you know, I started right after that ordinance came into effect. And there could have been some illegal operations out there, but from my understanding, they waited until the ordinance was put in place. Bring it back to me.
Yeah, I have a question.
And Mr. Mayor, just something more common. Oh, yeah. And Mr. Mayor, maybe for the easier part of it, the committee, you want to tackle the committee first before you get into the moratorium decision?
Well, I just, I had a couple of questions before we do that. So, all right, Travis, with the number of applicants that are in there right now, in the, in the queue, how long would it take to get through those if we didn't, if nothing was even half the time? I mean, how, I mean, how long would it take even to get through the ones we have?
Right now, I would have to say six to eight weeks, and probably a little bit longer if I had a budget today. Typically, before the moratorium was announced, it was a two to three week process. And that included ten days. But now it's, it's a lot longer. Do you know how long?
Just, just so you can all tell the people, and we have seven applicants that, new appeals, they're going to have to go to the planning commission, correct?
That's correct.
And then we have five applications, all requirements met, but they're, they're getting ready to send out the letters.
Yep, that's correct.
And then we have six that are at minor discrepancies, which means they still have to submit them, have more time to. Then we have three more that have major discrepancies, which could take longer to fix those. And then we have thirty-nine submittals that are unprocessed, which means they're not even, you haven't looked at those because they haven't even done the first four items that they're supposed to do.
Yeah, it's, it's forty-one, and like I say, that number increased given the number we have today.
But we're not talking like tomorrow, this, all these people are going to get a DHR. This is, no, it's, they're going to, it's going to take them, it's going to take a long time for us to even get through all of them.
That's, that's correct, given the case load.
Okay, that's, um, okay, so that's all I have really have for staff. Do we have any more staff questions? Okay, go ahead, Matt.
So just to clarify, if a moratorium took place regardless of which way it went, it doesn't stop a person that already has a vacation home rental from renting, correct?
That is correct.
I have a question. Typically, how long the appeals process, how much time does that take? How much of a delay is it for those who have put an application?
Well, so the-
Oh, I have, I mean, I can give you, you know, an exact answer.
Yeah, so the process, you know, once they complete all four items within the permitting process, staff sends out the three hundred radius notification and ten days. And so if there is an appeal, it all depends on the cycle, right? So depending on how quickly we can get it into the newspaper, our newspaper runs only on Wednesdays, then the next planning commission meeting. So maybe it could range from maybe ten days to, you know, two, three weeks. You know, it just depends on the cycle. Any more questions for staff? Will we make comments? Or talk about what we're going to do next?
One more question.
Yes, sir.
Is it correct that a person can't submit an application until the house is closed?
Until it's impromptu, is his third name? Yeah, you can't, you can't start a business, any type of business, without it first, you know, having ownership of it. Well, before we move on with this, I did, so I can say thank you everyone who spoke tonight. Thank you all for being here. It's very important for everyone to be engaged in the city and our discussion. So thank you all for being here, whether or not, you, everybody has different opinions, but thank you for being here. Okay, so we have a couple of things to address, and one of the things I'd like to- Obviously, we've talked about this, about the ordinance needs to be updated. So the planning commission has chosen two of their members, and we could choose two members tonight, and then we would go through the process of choosing some folks from the, from the public. So I, I think, you know, for us, if we're on agreement that we need to have a committee to do this, and I would like to volunteer and be the first one on the committee. Steve, you want to do also? Comment? Do you want to, do you want to, we'd have to vote on it then? Because that's what, you have to vote on them. If we don't, if we don't have two volunteers, we have to vote. So, okay, am I saying that right, Frank?
Yeah, I mean, you know, typically, the ad hoc committee has been a volunteer basis and consensus by the council. But if there's not consensus, the only way to really break that, or break that tie is-
Well, I haven't, I think, I'm going to be deciding. Yes, you are, sir. Because all three of us will vote on, we'll vote for each other, so.
Well, I do think Danny needs to be on because of his background and, hell, well, let's flip a coin on you or Steve.
Don't be scared. We're looking at you. She's all standing there.
Flip a coin.
Flip a coin?
Steve Burke.
That's what he's pointing to. Okay, that's what I'm funny you to do. But thank you, Matt, for your-
Frank, flip a coin. Heads Carmellet, tails Steve.
I don't have a coin.
I thought I had one too.
Cindy has a coin. Was that what the gals were, she went?
Yeah, heads Carmellet, tails Steve.
This is a very scientific thing.
I'll take home.
And what's the roll?
Roll and roll.
Tails.
Tails.
Tails, tails.
I guess it's Steve.
I'll take home.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's a softball. Thank you. Okay, so the committee would be myself and Steve, Max and Jim. And then what we'd said before was the citizens, now you will submit a application to Cindy, and then we will choose the three members from the public. The, the council will choose, Steve and I will choose them. What we're trying, Frank put together a semi-schedule because we tried to have some meetings in September, the seventh, fourteenth, and twenty-first. And obviously, it's going to have to be when you fill out your application. There could be more meetings than that, and he scheduled us for two-hour meetings. So, because like I said before, planning commission, it took eight planning commission meetings to get to this ordinance that we're at. So now if we're going to improve on this ordinance, we're going to have to have some specific things that we want to submit as a committee to the planning commission so we can move forward. Because, I don't know if I can tell you what the timeframe is, even if we meet three times in September, then they go to the planning commission. It actually could go, because we have, each ordinance has to be read and enacted for thirty days. So this actually could go to February, before we can even get this ordinance enacted, if we were to do something. Now, it doesn't mean we have to have a moratorium. It just means that for this ordinance to be improved on, it's going to take until February to do it. So I just want to make sure we understand that before we move on, move forward. Is that pretty correct, Seth? So now, the fun part. So the, the question is first, do we want to have a moratorium? Do we want to have a moratorium with allowing the permits to go forward, not to go forward? Do we want to have it where they have to, the appeals have to pay a fee? Do we want it, where these appeals come right to the council and let the planning commission? The planning commission is going to be pretty busy, Travis, am I correct, on some of the items? We actually, folks, when we're saying things are happening in Twenty-Nine, they actually are. We have some development coming. They just actually put some preliminary plans in. We've approved some plans. So it's, the planning commission is going to, and the, and the planning department. Travis, do you want to expand on that?
Yeah, we, we have at least probably seven planning projects, a hotel, a fast food restaurant, a laundromat that everybody's been talking about, a car wash, potentially another hotel, some multifamily housing. The city continues to work on the affordable housing component, so we've got a lot of work to do outside of the DHR, plus a housing element, downtown-specific plan, the building improvement plan for downtown. I could keep going on, though.
So I guess for us to consider, if we want to take some of the pressure off them, that the appeals actually come to us and not to the planning commission.
Yeah, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
So if the appeal came to us, is in there a fee?
Yeah, there, there is a, a fee on our approved fee schedule, both for the council and for the planning commission. What is that the policy for the past is waiting for the planning commission, but not for the council?
And what would that fee be?
Three hundred and five dollars.
For the council too?
Yes. So, um, do you want to go first, Scott?
Okay, I'm going first. Okay, so first of all, I'm going to say I'm not against vacation home rentals. I think it's a good thing for the city, the community, and that kind of stuff. And like I said, I was on the council when we first came up with this ordinance. And the reason we came up with it was because of the situation in the county. And the county was, well, for lack of a better term, jacked up. And so, you know, having foresight, we saw the need to do an ordinance before vacation home rentals started coming into the community. And so we did the ordinance, where I didn't do it, but the city did it. And they did the ordinance, and I think it was a great ordinance, and otherwise I wouldn't have voted. And in the package, you could see that it passed five oh. So everybody voted on it because we thought it was a good ordinance. It was, it did, it served the purpose. However, I do think that, just like anything, it needs to be updated. You know, you always update, and so it does need to be updated. And I do think that we need to figure out a way to get some relief to the planning commission and to do this ordinance. I just think that there needs to be a pause, some type of pause, so that we can get things done. That's just me. I'm just one person. But I think that there needs to be a pause to get things done in this process. Because if we continue, then we're going to get, like, for example, when we talked about it back in June, you know, we've got now seventy-something in the queue. So that's an extra like twenty more applications that came in the queue because we waited, you know, we gave them that time, and I understand that. But at the same time, again, I just think that there needs to be some type of pause. So my, you know, I think that we should, one, let the council handle the appeals, and also bring in the, the fee for the planning commission and do a moratorium with the understanding that the applications that are in now can still go through the process. That's just me.
First, you guys all sat here, listened to all the testimonies. We all have the same goal. We all have the same belief in the city. Some want to make it better by shortening DHRs, more regulations. The others want more DHRs, but do want regulations. So regardless of, everyone's topic was DHRs are okay, just more regulations. And most of this side's concern was taking away some income, slowing down the process, or maybe halting it, and that's where our big concern is. It's one of the reasons I pushed not to have that emergency one in June, tried to push it. I believe if we have to have, one, the ones that already got their stuff in June up to today's date, they're good, their grandfather, they can get their stuff in, they don't have to worry about it. But there has to be a pause. We looked at this. The staff is overwhelmed right now. And right now, we both want to- And right now, we both want the city to grow, blossom, tourism, pace its state, but right now we got a carton, the, the carton horse. And we have all these amenities coming to the city, placing for people to stay, so it's like, you know, they're overstaffed, understaffed with a bunch of work. Unfortunately, as much as I went around and tried to pregame not to do any pauses, they need a, a break to catch up and, and for us to get those regulations done. And I know it sucks, I'm like an umpire again.
Wait, 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 you guys had the opportunity to speak, please, be respectful. Please be respectful.
I know it sucks, and I'd rather be sitting on that side than sitting up here, so, you know, we gotta figure this out. We need to get these rules, the new regulations, we gotta do it as quick as possible. I see the timeline, and that's just by the steps, the process we have to do. But we gotta, we gotta come up with this stuff quick, and we gotta be, uh, we gotta go to the committee and the planning commission, and I'm sure the three, um, citizens will, will, will do the best we can to do it as fast as possible. Um, that's just, unless you can figure another way not to have a pause, is if there's no other way, like, you just can't accept for me.
Hire more people. Please, Levis, you guys had the opportunity, Levis, could you speak?
Easy, easy to say to hire more people when you're not on either side of the finances or budget, and I understand that.
Budget money to hire people, it's a major.
And I got them, it's, they can, they can say they want them, so, so that's where I stand right now. Unless we have other ideas.
Carmen.
Okay. Like many of you, I wasn't born here, but I've been here all, um, I have two and a half years shy of thirty years of being here. My husband and I plan was, he got stationed here, I was gonna finish school, and we were going back to Houston. And then something happened, fell in love with it. And, um, there were some, uh, positives and there were some negatives to Twenty-Nine Palms. One of the things I didn't like is that if I really wanted to do something, I had to travel to do it. And I did not like the choices of houses that I had, I lived out of town. But things are changing, and I'm happy to see that. I am for vacation home rentals. Um, I'm really not for pause, to be quite honest, um, and I'm not for moratorium. I, I think that somehow we need to figure out how to keep it going, because I think if we stop, if we halt, it's like, I'm a nurse, it's like the body being, becoming constipated. We need to keep things going and keep things going.
Okay, thank you. So yes, there's, uh, we have, this is, this is a much broader picture than everyone's seeing, or everyone's seeing it, and I just think everyone has a little bit different perspective. I'm also a long-term resident here, been here since nineteen sixty-seven, and I've seen, gone through neighborhoods where houses, whole neighborhoods were basically rundown, out-of-town, uh, rent, um, landlords, just getting the money that they think they can get because Twenty-Nine Palms had, you had to get rent somewhere here, and they just knew they could do it without putting a dime into the place. And it just seems like we've gone, the pendulum has changed a little bit, where now we actually have some folks that want to improve because they live somewhere where this, the house that they just bought is not acceptable to them as a person, or as a business, or as just human nature, because, and everyone knows, I don't know how many people in this room have that went out of town and rented, uh, a V H R, but the people who do go rent those places have money, they're not, some of, yes, there are a few occasions where they, you get, get, they're gathered to have a party, and it gets, couldn't get out of hand. We had one come to the meeting and say, the meeting, the only one I ever got out of hand was his daughter's party that was there, it was kinda, he was a little embarrassed. Oh, it was you, okay. At least somebody, at least somebody was here that, I don't know if it was you, but that it was his, it was his daughter's party that, that actually got out of hand. Uh, we did hire a new, um, code enforcement person, um, that is going to help, and they are actually working, you told me Saturdays, right? Friday, Saturday? They are gonna be working Friday, Saturdays, so they're gonna be available. When this committee gets together, there's, we're not, I don't even wanna talk about those options because this is too broad, but, um, there's all kinds of options within the new ordinance or strengthening of the ordinance that would, that will mitigate some of your concerns. Now, the reason I asked that question, how long would it actually take for you to get all those applications? If, even if tomorrow, if fifty more brought them in, they're not gonna get seen for at least, what, two, three months at least, before they're gonna think it appeals, it's gonna be even longer. Now, one of the things I've learned in life about things when there's, um, when you have volunteers, and basically this planning commission, and if you looked at our salaries, which I, I, uh, I assume from the city clerk, but some of you have, then we're volunteers, and we're gonna get three people together to be volunteers. But if you, if we have, um, if, if there's no moratorium, it would, it would behoove the people to move the process faster. In other words, to get the process going faster, to get into the planning commission, because that's what everybody wants. Everybody wants to move forward. So, um, I'm actually, um, I have, I actually haven't been for a moratorium from the start of this. And not because you're so flexible there either. Because, um, being in Twenty-Nine Palms as long as I have, seeing the, the improvement that's going on right now in the amount of cash that's being put into the city, and I'm not saying it just because they're making money, cause some of these folks are making good money, and some of them, you know, if you're gonna go into business, folks, I'm, I'm sorry, if you don't make money, you don't, you're gonna get out of business, you're gonna be broke. So, and I'm not, I'm, I'll stop there. But I guess what I'm saying to the council is, even if we did not have to put a moratorium right now, we're not gonna get that many more, um, vacation home rentals. And the, and the rules that, it, what, and I have not heard one person talk about the rules that we have in place right now, only that, it's the clustering part. The, the rules as far as, um, because if there's noise, they, they get code enforcement called on them, and they want the sheriff. Now, I'm sorry if some people don't agree with how it gets handled, cause, but obviously it, it, at least it got, the, the one case got handled, but it, you, the more rules you put in, I don't know how to put this, the more rules you put in, it means you have to, you have to, I don't know how to explain it, and, you, the more rules you have, it's just, it's just, it's just more enforcement. You have to, you know, we don't, even if you, I had somebody say, well, hire some more help, but even if we hired six enforcement folks, you, you, that means you're, you're gonna have somebody knocking on every single, I don't know, that's not why people come to Twenty-Nine Palms, by the way. That they don't come here to be regulated over and over again. That's just not the way. You live in the desert, you know, it might take twenty minutes for a sheriff to show up, it might take twenty minutes for the fire department to show up, because we have one truck, and he's out in Wonder Valley, and now he's gotta come back to Twenty-Nine Palms, with all the sheriffs are in Joshua Street because there's a shooting, and some, now something happens in Twenty-Nine Palms. So when you live in the desert, you, it's, it's a risk to take. I'm sorry, that's just, so, uh, so my opinion, I'll quit talking now, and my, my opinion is, for one, first of all, we have to agree on all four of us have to come with one motion to vote. So first of all, I agree with Max about the appeals come into city council for the fees. So I'd like to, if someone made a motion for that, so we could vote on that part of it, and then we can move to next. Motion to, the appeals come to the city council, and there's, okay. And we have a second, Carmen.
Now, um, also, can we reenact the planning commission fee too?
Yes, we can. You wanna include that in the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion is that appeals come to the city council with fees, and the fees will be reenacted at the planning commission level. Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, if I could, just one clarification before I turn it over to the city clerk. So there, there are, uh, I think five?
Seven.
Seven, uh, appeals that are posted tonight. Uh, so the staff will be requesting that that, whatever your policy is this evening, would apply for those, uh, seven cases that will be heard posted.
Well, they tweeted it before there was.
Okay, the appeals, the fees are in there.
No, we're gonna vote it today. No, we're voting on the fee today.
Wasn't the fee always in place?
No. No, not at all.
So the fee was always in place for the council?
Fee, but, but appeals was never.
Well, there was an appeals fee for the council.
Always there. So if you recall back in June of two thousand twenty, uh, it went to the council for an appeal.
Yeah, but they built individual, those seven, put it in, did they know that they were going to the planning commission?
Correct, yeah, that, that goes prior to whatever your policy is this evening.
Did you ask, should we inform them that it's changed and if they still wanna go through with it?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. So may choose, you know, to not pay the appeals fee, and they can withdraw.
I don't want, tomorrow morning, they're gonna pay something.
Correct, yes, they can withdraw. Are you ready to roll?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is, is that what the amendment is, is those seven, we can get it applied, uh, for the appeals?
Councilmember Ray.
Hi.
Councilmember Billery.
Hi.
Mayor Portembo Gilby.
Aye.
Mayor Minz.
Aye.
Approved, four zero one.
Okay, so then this means the appeals now go to the city council with fees, and the fees are now reenacted in, at the planning commission level. Okay. Okay, so the next, or this, uh, let's see, if I can, remember, so we get to the big one. I guess the next one is the moratorium and with, without, um, let me go through.
And, and Mr. Mayor, this is an alternative within the staff report, is no moratorium at all. So, yeah, there is a recommendation, that is the opposite.
Well, if there's no moratorium, then they're not worried about it. Yeah, so that's, okay. So I guess, Travis, the next, if somebody wants to make a, a motion.
I'm making motions if there's no moratorium.
If there's no.
I'm getting it.
Okay, see, there's no more turning, do you have a second? Okay, do you have a second? Okay, any other discussion before we move? Okay.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Billery.
Aye.
Mayor Portembo Gilby.
Aye.
Mayor Minz.
Aye.
Approved, four zero one.
Okay. All right, uh, we'll move on to the future initiated items. Um, the only one we have on there is still the tables at Veterans Park. Can we get an update on that as far as, are we gonna be able to use some of that COVID money that was getting?
We are. So the next council meeting we're gonna move forward, uh, the American Recovery Act money will now allow, because of the impact on parks, because of COVID, allow upgrades.
Oh, yeah, wait, Joel, I'm at, sorry.
Even though you shouldn't, I see you shut up the whole time. Okay, so, uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, so the COVID, the American Recovery Act money does now allow for improvements to, what, parks, because of the impact, uh, due to COVID, so our parks. So next meeting, we're gonna be bringing, uh, September fourteenth, uh, the, the pool, uh, along with the, uh, picnic tables and sidewalks at Veterans Park. And I know, uh, Councilmember Billery had also brought up about the shade structure, and I think it was the, uh, the, uh, oh, yeah.
Where's the location at?
Uh, two big tall buildings have shades, two, two green trees.
Yeah. Yeah, cause it is, it is nice. And then we, we'll be bringing those two. Folks, can we go to the podium, please? We still have some more of business. Thank you. Hang on. Jeff, do you know better?
Thank you all so much. Thank you all so much.
Okay, go ahead, Karen.
Uh, so that was all, yeah. So we'll be bringing it forward next meeting, September fourteenth, for that discussion. The pool, Veterans Park, and along with that shade structure is actually up.
And on that, I think you would've brought that part of the, you over there eating on me. So, I mean, obviously, um, you know, it, hopefully some folks from the, the community will, will have mentioned anything they want, cause it's just, we have some events there, um, Max had, um, the prayer meetings there and stuff, and other people had events, so we had a Christmas event there, so it'd, it'd be a good update for us to have something there. Okay, does anybody have any, um, future items they'd like to add to the list? I think we're gonna be pretty full here for a while. Okay, well, seeing none, um, public comments. This is time for the public to address the city council issues within the jurisdiction the city council is not on this agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during their comments. There's a timed invitation, three minutes per person. If you haven't already done so, please fill out a name and address slip and give it to the city clerk. The city council prohibits by stable, often taking actions disgusting items not included on the current agenda. Public comments on the current agenda items will be deferred until the initiation of the item on the agenda. Does anybody turn into sleep? Sleep, sleep, yeah. We're already in a slip, there's sleep on out. Yeah, we've had a slip. No slips, anybody from the public want us to speak? None? Okay, dinner? Go ahead, Karen. It'd be on something other than the V H Rs, okay?
Another housing issue?
No, it's not V H R.
Um, I, I, uh, heard a couple of things touched on, and I have planned on being in more meetings, um, so I'm not having to ask these questions, but I did wanna know, what are we looking like as far as, uh, affordable housing in Twenty-Nine Palms, and what are the plans with that? I know a lot of, uh, the area where projects meetings is going in with some of the lower end of housing, and it's gone now, um, or squatted in currently, uh, so I guess, is that something that's on the docket? It seems like it is, I heard a, a point.
Yeah, uh, so you may address it over there. Yeah, and even actually tomorrow, uh, community development director Travis Clark and myself are meeting with a low-lot housing developer. It is a direction of the council, we have a standard housing stock is, low for low-lot housing, so we continue to work with developers. The challenging part is because the lack of sewer that we have in our community, uh, which is the other thing that the council has given staff direction on working with sewer. So there's challenges, but definitely staff is working on that soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, now, you, Frank, city manager.
I, I do wanna talk to you after.
Um, as the council has given us, we need not a timeline related to the light of the chambers.
You know, I, I do not have an update on that. They, they got the pedestal set, you know, cause if you look there at campus, it's already set, but, you know, because we've heard, always heard through the years, and I haven't confirmed this, but I will, and I'll follow back to the council, that the mass arms are all custom-made, right? And there's a lead time on, on those arms. So I'm assuming, you know, everybody blames COVID for everything and delays, and I'm assuming that is contributing to it as well, uh, but I'll get an answer to that and, and let the council know.
Okay, thank you. So, let me. And quite honestly, as preparation for the meeting tonight, I don't have any comments. And I know the council probably likes it, I see the council over there, uh, high five minutes. So I can get my.
And I, I'll add, I'll add something. Wait, Joe, on your agenda, um, these stuff, you know, lights that we have in town are so hard to see, unbelievable. When you're, when you're getting, oh, when you're stuck on red on both sides, and there's nobody in the turn lane, it'll turn red, and you'll sit there for another half hour, two and a half, uh, half minute or minute waiting for that those to turn red, so we on red and go.
Sixty-two or a do.
Sixty-two, uh, on a sixty-two, they're all like that.
On sixty-two, okay. So I'll follow up with council.
They'll be, they'll be the sixty-two, that's one bad one. And then Celia and the other one, Shout, and the leaders, all, they're all like that. It just seems like it's just a waste of time, sitting there doing absolutely nothing, waiting for it to turn back red.
Okay, so I'll, I'll follow up with council and then report back to the council on that second item, so, okay.
We got an update on, um, Miss Celia?
Miss Celia, oh, the, uh, the media lines?
Not Miss Celia, I'm sorry, um, Lorraine.
Lorraine, yeah. So, so Lorraine, so our street, Lorraine, not sixty-two, look at Lorraine.
No, Lorraine.
Right. So that's our city street, so I'll, we talked, so maybe the third end, I'll follow up with council that, uh, with the public works crew to see when that will be addressed. So there's some hot holes that, uh, consumers, citizens are complaining about. Raymond? And Raymond?
I know we talked about Raymond.
I know we talked about Raymond.
I was wondering, the two inside.
So Raymond, yeah, Raymond has been addressed a few times, though, but it keeps coming up?
Because it's like, it's like solid, sort of, a theme on sides, so one main road.
I'll report back to the council on all those ideas. Okay, appreciate that. Okay, anybody else? We all good? Oh, nothing? All right, well, journey's key.